Okay, we are now live.
Tell me when the numbers stop rolling in.
How about this, I'll tell you when one starts rolling in. We have one.
Okay, well, let's get started. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on January sixth, twenty twenty-one. In addition, notice of the this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, two twenty-one, South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on March twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant's statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hale, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Beryl Metler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yeah.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hope there.
Here.
Clerk, I just want to confirm there are no approval of minutes for this meeting?
No, not this time. The YouTube just went up today, so I wasn't able to get them done in time.
Okay. All right, then we'll go right on. Are there any questions on the agenda from the council members?
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go right into our council reports. And again, I will call on you in the order you appear on my screen. So Councilman Hale, you're up first.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So just a few things. I wanted to let folks know that after a meeting between the mayor and Rutgers President Hollowell, we had a very productive discussion with some folks over at Rutgers about future partnerships between Rutgers and Highland Park. And it's certainly an area that I think we want to move forward in very early stages of increasing those. But we'd love to hear from people in terms of what they would like in terms of partnerships between Rutgers and Highland Park. We think there's a lot of great opportunities, but please, if you have those, please go ahead and let me know. Also wanted to let people know that the redevelopment entity meeting that was scheduled for April twenty-seventh has been moved to April thirteenth at seven PM by Zoom. It's been noticed, so it should be out there. It's a we've are able to move ahead with that meeting. So I just wanted people to know that. There is also a FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions document that is on the Borough website about redevelopment. We took a lot of the comments and questions we've gotten and tried to consolidate those into a document that, you know, people could 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 take with them and catch up on redevelopment as needed. I know that others are going to talk about this, and the mayor already has, but I wanted to thank Abby Stern Cardinal for all her work on matching people up with vaccines. It's pretty amazing volunteer work to jump into that, and so I just wanted to say thanks to her. If you are either able to help people in that process or in need of that process, there's an email that she set up, hpvaxhelp@gmail.com that I thought we wanted to. Again, that's hpvaxhelp, H-P-V-A-X-H-A-H-E-L-P at gmail dot com. So I wanted to encourage people to do that. And then lastly, we are starting to get information about the Federal American Rescue Plan. This is the one point nine trillion dollar stimulus package that we've that was recently passed. It's we're still sort of weeding through it, still learning about it. I do want to highlight a couple of things that we've heard that I think are going to be important. There is a specific restaurant revitalization part of the bill that is five billion dollars for restaurants. What's particularly important to Highland Park is that it is set aside of five billion, excuse me, for restaurants that are smaller, like Highland Park Restaurants, with gross revenues under five hundred thousand dollars. So those are it's a it's a great plan that we ought to and will be pushing forward quite soon. Another important thing, I think, that is important for people to recognize. What we know about the funding streams is that if you are a municipality of over fifty thousand residents, that it is direct federal aid, meaning that they'll send a check directly to municipalities over fifty thousand. That's not us. And so what that means is that there will be a process through the state for any municipal aid that will be getting out of that. So that means the timing on this will be a little bit different. You may hear about large municipalities going and spending or using or doing something with their AFP money, but or ARP money that but, you know, we we expect that it will come to us, but there is a process. It'll go through the state. That's important. Also, the what we understand is that the the plan is that municipal aid and state aid is not all at once. It will be doled out with fifty percent relatively shortly and then fifty percent in twenty in twelve months. I only wanted to bring those up because, you know, this is an important help. It does an incredible amount of things for people, individuals, that I won't go into. But when we talk about the help coming from the federal government for this, I just encourage people to recognize that there is a process by which this will come. There's a process by which we'll deliberate on it, that it is not a, you know, money from heaven immediately is the important thing. So I think that's important to know. That's my report, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Canavera, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you. Um, March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. This campaign seeks to raise awareness about inclusion for people with developmental disabilities in all area of community life, as well as awareness of barriers that people with disabilities still sometimes face in connecting with their communities. The figures show from the last figures available, or two thousand and seventeen, show about one in six children are identified as having some type of a developmental disability. But people shouldn't have to worry or be alarmed if someone has a developmental disability. They can usually live a long, natural life, as long as they have the proper supports. This is a good time for us all to remind our children and ourselves to try to be inclusive to all members of our community. The Human Relations Commission will be having a meeting tomorrow. The link is on the website. The Board of Health would like to please remind everybody to continue to wear your masks at all times when in public and to keep trying to sign up for the vaccines. And again,
Tara?
Tara, Tara, you're muted.
We lost your sound.
Sorry. What was the last thing you heard?
About the Human Relations Commission meeting.
Okay. The Board of Health would like to please remind everybody to continue to wear their masks when in public. Keep trying to make a vaccine appointment. And again, Abby, thank you for all your help that your group is doing. And the Commission for Universal Access is still looking for input from the community on events they'd like to see to promote inclusion for all residents. The Community Food Bank is open the second and fourth Thursday, nine AM to ten forty-five and six PM to seven forty. I'm sorry, from six PM to seven. And the Saturday following that Thursday, from nine AM, I'm sorry, nine thirty to ten thirty. Donations can be made using their Amazon wishlist, or you can send a check directly to the Borough. In the memo, put Highland Park Food Pantry. The Highland Park Gives a Hoot food pantry is every Tuesday from ten AM to eleven AM. And donations can may be made from them by mailing a check to the Borough Hall in the memo. Please put Highland Park Gives a Hoot. These are tax deductible. And between these two programs, we're serving over three hundred families, and both programs are growing their client list. Mental Health Commission will be having their first event this Sunday, the twenty-first, grieving all that we lost together. This does not just include a loss of a family member, but all of the losses that we've suffered throughout the pandemic. And the webs, the information for the Zoom link is on the Borough website. And again, anybody who is in a mental health crisis, please reach out for help. The hotlines from Middlesex County is Rutgers Behavioral Health, Caroline, eight five 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 one five five seven zero zero, and Raritan Bay Medical Center hotline, seven three two four four two three seven nine four. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. The Community Development Block Grant Committee held their public hearing on applicants. The committee has approved the following proposed projects. Highland Park Community Food Pantry, three thousand dollars. The Summer Camp Program, twenty thousand dollars. Community Youth Outreach Programs, thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Senior Transportation, fifteen thousand. Senior Outreach, thirteen thousand. And our Facade Improvement Program, twelve thousand dollars. The proposed projects are on the agenda tonight for a vote, actually, to allocate the funds. Thank you to the committee. I know our departments depend on these funds year after years. So thank you to the committee for considering their applications. Tonight on the work session, we will be discussing the twenty twenty-one budget. Feel free to reach out to myself or our business administrator if you have any questions. Today is World Social Work Day. Shout out to all of our social workers in the community, including Councilwoman Canavera. You are truly appreciated whether it's responding to crisis situations or getting your clients access to the resources they need to improve their lives. Thank you. And lastly, I want to wish our residents a blessed Passover and Easter. And I also want to thank Abby as well, too. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you need a COVID test? Ridgewood Diagnostics Lab will be on site at the Highland Park Community Center to administer COVID tests on the following dates and times. Three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Monday is ten to four. Wednesday is noon to four. Friday is ten to one. The testing is at no cost to participants. And tests will be either billed directly to your insurance company or billed to the CARES Act if you're uninsured. Please look for the flyer on the Borough's Facebook page and on the Borough's website. If you do want to register, you can register at testnj.online/reg-aspx prior to walking into the testing site. But walk-ins are welcome. Please bring a photo ID and your insurance card. If you're uninsured, please just bring a form of identification. This testing site has been has been a real success, and I just really want to thank Terry and Terry Hovair and Missy and in the Borough Office. Last week's numbers in total were about a hundred and fifty people, so people are showing up. And on Wednesday, we had sixty-four people in a matter of four hours. If you have any questions about the testing site, please refer to our FAQ page on our website, And if you have further questions, contact emissy, M-I-S-S-E-Y, at hpboro.com. Do you need a shot? Please contact our community center at seven three two eight one nine zero zero five two, and they can assist you. And if you haven't already, please make sure that you register to make an appointment through the New Jersey Vaccine Scheduling System at covidvaccine nj.gov. Our Highland Park Recreation Department has several programs open for registration right now, including theater, youth sports, coding classes, adult sports and adult classes. Please go to highlandparknj.myrec, M-Y-R-E-C, dot com to see all that the Recreation Department has to offer. And please stay tuned for we will have, we will be announcing camper distribution soon. Please save the date for Thursday, July first, because that is that will be our Independence Day fireworks, which are very exciting. And the rain date is Monday, July fifth. There will be summer camp job opportunities through the Rec Department, and those will be posted shortly. And again, the registration, which I mentioned. Now, I'm going to read something because this one was hard to kind of summarize for the for this, and I'm gonna I'm gonna try something new in the Zoom age. We have St. Patrick's Day selfie scavenger hunt. The Highland Park Department of Aging, with some help from its friends, is going to be placing leprechauns around town for the month of March. Take selfies with five leprechauns and email them or post them on our Facebook page, and we will have a prize while supplies last. You'll need to find the luck of the Irish to find all ten. The game already started on March eleventh and ends on March thirtieth. Clues and pictures of locations will appear on the Highland Park Department of Aging Facebook page, so please like that page. And there's a QR code right there to find out more information about leprechaun locations. At the bottom, you can email, you can email Chad at HB Borough or post pictures on Facebook, and please tag the Highland Park Department of Aging. That is my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. That was really cool, Matt. That was really cool. I like that. The Teen Center continues to do great work. I reported on them last month, but I have to give them more kudos again because they they have been busy supplying or supplying the needs of not only food to twenty-eight families every two weeks, but they have consistently worked with different entities to provide more programming to the youth that attend the Teen Center. For example, Alpha Aviation was their coast, their East Coast partner, and they ran twelve, they ran twelve students to a Zoom flight simulator class. And they're going to continue to do so and, you know, showing flights around the world, that kind of thing, introducing more of our children to aviation. So that's awesome. They also took some break when they needed it, when the the center was open for internet use for those who don't have internet at home. They had an opportunity to drop in, do their schoolwork, and play basketball. Basketball court was donated to the youth center, to the teen center, and they, the kids really, 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 really enjoy it. No matter what kind of weather you go outside, you see them out there playing. So it's a nice break from being stuck in the house or being doing their homework all day. They get a break and they get to go outside and stretch and exercise, so that's just awesome. They also participated in a youth town hall discussion. And with this, with some youth in Camden, New Jersey, they discussed issues such as climate change, how to build better communities, how can youth help to prepare and engage and shape the community in which they live in. So there, it's not just here in Highland Park. They're bridging out, they're reaching out, and they're doing some really awesome stuff. So again, hats off to the Teen Center. It's one of the best things that we ever did because there is a home for these kids who really need it at this time and the families that go there. This past Saturday, I happened to stop in, and I was like, why are the chairs outside? Come to find out that they were doing a movie production. So they are now also teaching them how to be the next film director, movie director. And they were people, professional people there that was helping them, how to show them how to do professional videos and modeling and what have you. So I told them to send me a clip, and then we would love to share it on our YouTube and our Borough website. So I'm looking forward to that. So they continue to find creative ways how to use that space, and it just goes to show how much it was really needed. Moving on, our fire and first aid, we had two fires in town this weekend. One was a brush mulch fire that was on North Fourth. Then right after that, then there was another fire at St. Paul's. And that can be contributed to the high winds that we've had that just made these brush fires go crazy. But needless to say, our first responders were on it. Our first aid squad was there to help, to lend a helping hand. Also, our fire department, along with our the fire department, we had shift commanders, Soden. You have Officer O'Leary from our police department, Officer Giles and Officer Buttermark. The or Buttermark has a very intense knowledge of fire because he is, he's a skilled firefighter in his hometown. So he was able to go out there and to lend a hand and to deal with the fire. So kudos to all of them. I just wanted to pause for a moment to say what's going on in our fire department and our first aid squad. We have seen, I would say globally, but I can only speak for what we have seen here in New Jersey. And articles that I've read said that it's going on in every other state, too, that since COVID, that there is a huge decline in emergency volunteer services. Some squads have gone out of business completely. Others are looking for creative ways how to get volunteers. Others are looking for what kind of services or how to merge or how to stay afloat. Highland Park is no different. We are struggling with the same things, too, like how do we recruit more volunteers? How do you maintain the volunteers that we have? A lot of areas where they were not able to do as much training last year. The Fire Academy did not have any training because of COVID, because you couldn't have people congregate. We're looking at creative ways of how to get people back into the building socially distanced, of course, and make sure that everyone is safe. With that said, we are looking for volunteers for our fire department. So if you're out there and you want to volunteer and you want to give back to your town, please go to the Borough website, and you can get a volunteer application from there submitted. And someone from our fire department will be happy, and our first aid squad will be happy to reach out to you. So as we struggle to get more volunteers on board and to get them trained and everything else, we are not by ourselves, unfortunately. But I just want you to know that we are doing our best to keep our town safe. We will continue to do our best to keep Highland Park safe and make sure that everyone is secure while we try to find creative ways how to recruit volunteers. We're looking at, and Terry and I have been working, and the public safety team has been working on a lot of different angles to make sure that we're all kept safe as it comes to first aid and fire and other, all other areas of public safety. So we will keep you posted, but we want you to be aware that we are down on volunteers, not just here in Highland Park, across the board, and a lot of squads. We are fortunate because our squads are still functioning. Other towns are not as fortunate as us. And again, thanks to everyone that came out and responded to the both of those fires. Upcoming is our Police Community Forum. This will be on Thursday at eight, at seven PM. So this coming Thursday, seven PM, our community police forum. Please go to the Borough website to see your Zoom link, so you can come in and let us know what's on your mind. You can share with us, and we can take it from there. Also, the police department is doing, again, by popular demand. We didn't have it last year, but it's our Junicadet Academy. It's going to be from July twelfth to the eighteenth. They're taking registration now, so anyone who's interested in being a part of the Junicadet Academy, and I must say, they, as usual, they are limited spaces. So you can go to the website now and sign up to participate. That's my report. Before I close, I want to say also, thanks to Abby for all the work that her and her team put together to make sure people who would not necessarily have access to register, that she made that possible. Kudos to you. I took that and I sent it out to all the links that I have and got that great feedback because people are very appreciative. So thank you, Abby. And I guess everyone was listening. We say, when you elect us to office, you don't leave us alone. You're there with us through the good, the bad, and to help us to make things better. And this is a great example of how the community comes together, and it's not only on our shoulders to make these things happen, but the community came in, helped in this time when it was so, so needed. So Abby and team, thank you so much. That's my report.
Thank you, Elsie. Council President Phil George, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, I do. Not too long, but some big news for everybody. New Jersey Department of Transportation will be resurfacing Route twenty-seven between Second Avenue and Fifth Avenue, starting this Monday, March twenty-second, weather permitting. The work will be at night, so traffic will be detoured around, much like street fair days, from approximately eight PM to five AM each night. NGDOT estimates it'll take three days to complete. Please remember, though, that this will cause some traffic delays and that you should have moved your car if you're in the downtown area before the work starts, or there's a possibility it could get towed. Other good news, DPW is now taking phone reservations for by appointment bulk trash removal. DPW will doing pickups according to scheduled appointments every Wednesday in April, May, and June by appointment only. To make an appointment, please call Public Works at seven three two two four seven nine three seven nine. That's seven three two two four seven nine three seven nine. That number and the information are also on the Borough's website under Departments, DPW Bulk Trash Removal. DPW has returned to pothill repairs now that the weather is abating a little bit and crews are out almost every day working on the roads. They're trying to get to all repairs, and if you have called or if there's some patching in front of your house, try to keep your vehicles away from the repair area because if there are cars parked and the crew can't get someone to move them, the repair may be delayed as they move to another location. The Native Plant Sanctuary had its second, second plant sale by the New Jersey Native Plant Society on Saturday down at the Plant Sanctuary. I stopped by to thank the volunteers for the event, which was strictly prepaid, vehicle delivery with social distancing only, no personal contacts. It was very successful. There were lines of people picking up. I want to thank Councilwoman Canavera and Councilman Hirsch for their work on the snow removal working group in the Public Works Committee, along with our superintendent at DPW and our Borough Administrator. We've been at work with the administration of DPW looking at past and present practices and examining ways to improve delivery of snow removal in normal and extreme conditions, which may become more the same in the future. We hope to have recommendations for council discussions by April. Finally, the state has announced the second round of library bond funding, and Highland Park Library will be participating with the discussion at this month's meeting. Our wish, our family's wishes to our residents for Passover and Easter and be well and safe as the spring weather warms our hearts and minds after a rough winter for us all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, and I'm pleased to report it's shorter because many of the council members have covered a lot of the terrain, so I won't do that. What I would like to let everybody know, spring has sprung, and we will start to see PSE and G back in town to continue their infrastructure upgrades of the gas service, the gas lines, the mains, and some of the service connections. They are kind of starting small while they wrap up in Edison next door. Um, they are kind of starting small while they wrap up, uh, in, in Edison next door. Um, you would have gotten some, uh, communications directly if you're affected by this work, but I'll just mention. First up will be, uh, Franklin Street as well as some locations along Du Close Lane. Um, and we will be putting out a mixel with more detail as to which roads and so forth. But I just wanted you to know, uh, this will be coming through. They're, they're focused initially in the triangle area, but they will be moving through and as we have in the past. We will be balancing that with our own road improvement program and, and juggling that to our vestibility. So. Um, hopefully it won't be quite as chaotic because we won't have a big pandemic in between start and finish of the project. Um, but it is, they are coming back through and it's a, it's a fairly ambitious program. So just stay tuned for more details on that. But I believe our work will begin on the 22nd on Franklin Street in Highland Park. So just for those of you there. Uh, and then, uh, later that week, Du Close Lane work. So just keep an eye out for those and any, uh, traffic detours that may be required. Um, uh, the only other thing I just wanted to make sure, uh, because I believe it's on the consent agenda, but it's on a, on a fun note. Um, it, we, we are gearing up for our spring tree planting. Um, and we'll be awarding that contract and getting rolling with that. Hopefully trees will start to be planted. Uh, starting in April, May. So that's very excited. The focus neighborhood was the triangle again. Households who will be receiving trees would have gotten letters from the shade tree advisory committee. Um, and so you, you should be aware that that's coming and, uh, very excited to get your new tree and to take care of it. So. There's a lot of positive things happening, I think, uh, coming into the, uh, better weather, hopefully. Uh, that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
Uh, no report, Madam Mayor.
All right. Um, I have a few things, some of which were covered by some of our council members. Um, I do want to add to some of what Councilman Hale said about the COVID-19 stimulus. Package. Uh, I know that many of you have read or heard about, about the, uh, some of the. Funding that's going to be coming to Highland Park. I just want to be clear. I've been in contact. Constantly with Congressman Pallone's office and, and the congressman himself about the funding. Uh, right now, uh, we're looking at approximately 1.3 million dollars coming into Highland Park. It will not, as Councilman Hale said, it will not be coming directly to us because our population is below 50,000. It will be going through the state. Um, and for those of us who have lived through. Um, the energy tax rebates and comp are not actually finding its way. To the individual municipalities from the state. I want you to know that because of his advocacy on our behalf, um, this bill. Um, Congressman Pallone insured me, um, has deadline dates. By which the state must release the money to the municipalities. Um, I believe it's, uh, 30 days from when they receive the funds. And, uh, there's a, um, a possibility they can extend that another 30 days. Um, however, there is a deadline for when they must give us the money or they must return it to the federal government. So that was good to hear. Um, I do not know yet because these, it's, they're moving targets. Um, the dates that we will be receiving some funding. Nor do I know exactly what the final restrictions are going to be. Because that appears to be somewhat in flux as well. As soon as I receive the final information from Congressman Pallone's office. Um, I will definitely be sure to get that information out to everyone. Um, and that's something for us to look forward to. Um, folks touched on the whole COVID-19 situation, so I will keep some of my remarks brief. Um, but just so you know. Uh, March numbers are not good, folks. Um, actually, since December, we've been heading in the wrong direction. And, um, that has me extremely concerned about where we might be after the holidays. That are approaching of Easter and Passover. Um. So, um, I, I'm asking everyone to please don't. Give up now. Um, we are so close to the finish line here. Um, I, I found out from the county just the other day that 26.7% of our population has been vaccinated. We have a long way to go to get to that 70% number. Um, but, you know, we're heading in that direction. Um, to assist with that, uh, Middlesex County has announced that seniors aged 65 and older. Have access to free dedicated COVID-19 vaccine appointments in New Jersey. For more information, you can call the New Jersey Department of Health Senior Hotline from eight AM to eight PM. At eight, five, six, two, four, nine, seven, zero, zero, seven. Or you can visit the website at covid19 nj.gov. Forward slash pages, forward slash vaccine. And just so you know, our own RIT Aid is participating in that program. If you need assistance with getting appointments, as several of the council members have mentioned. Um, please call the community center staff at seven, three, two, eight, one, nine, zero, zero, five, two. And they will be happy to help you get your appointments. And they have been working very closely with the volunteers that have been mentioned. Um, by every one of our council people tonight. Um, so, um. So that's a good thing. Um, additionally, as Councilman Hirsch mentioned, we are continuing with our free COVID-19 testing. He gave you the times, um, but it's been a very successful program as he said. Um, again, I just want to iterate that Highland Park is so close to making progress against this pandemic. Please don't let us slip backwards now. Continue to wear your mask when you leave your home. Maintain six feet of social distance from others outside your, uh, immediate family. Wash your hands often, get tested for the virus, get vaccinated. We can do this Highland Park. I know we can. Finally, it is Women's History Month. And in honor of this month, I want to share a profile of a very admirable Highland Park resident. Who is making an impact on the global scene. Nasrin Rafik grew up in Afghanistan. And received her bachelor's degree in languages and literature from Kabul University. She has worked with international donor funded programs such as the United Nations, the World Bank. And USAID for over 16 years. She has developed remarkable expertise in leading programs that foster women's and youth economic development and independence. She came to the United States with her family in 2017. Nasrin currently works in the US as the Director of Afghanistan for Women's Campaign International. It's a nonprofit group that works in emerging democracies and post-conflict regions around the world. This group equips women to be able to actively participate in public advocacy. Markets and political processes. As one measure of her remarkable skills and success. Over 75% of graduates of her internship program have gained full-time jobs. Or internships with a variety of projects and financial organizations throughout the world. Nasrin has been a member of Highland Park's Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. Now a subgroup of our Human Relations Commission for the past four years. Nasrin is a natural leader and a role model. And we are privileged that she calls Highland Park home. Thank you, Nasrin. Okay, we. Yes. Um, we are now, um, open for our first public comment session. Um, at this time, we've allotted 21 minutes. Three minute maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that are on the agenda. If you want to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda, please do so at the second public comment session later in the evening. The borough clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is 30 seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three minute mark to make sure everyone has time to speak. As a reminder, I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement. Or if, if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided. Or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad. Or select the raise hand button on the application. The borough administrator will announce your turn. By reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on this agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now.
All right, Mayor, I see John Valeri. Okay, John, state your name and address. For the record.
Um, yes, John Valeri, 106, uh, South Sixth Avenue. Um, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, you are right. We shouldn't be, uh, letting our guard down in regards to, uh, this coronavirus pandemic. And yes. Um, um, Ms. Foster Dublin and everybody else, um, you know, talking about the teen center. I actually made a donation of. Uh, hand sanitizer and disinfectants along with toilet paper and paper towels. So if, um, anybody has the, or anyone has the opportunity to do so. For any organization in town, especially the teen center, please do so because, I mean, yeah. Uh, they, they say that people with underlying conditions like myself. Or, um, people that are above the age of 65 are high risk, but then again. We don't know what this virus can do. I mean, in my motherland, which is Italy, this virus has killed, uh, young people, especially a 26-year-old with a perfectly healthy immune system. And a few 10-year-olds when the pandemic first started. So we shouldn't be letting our guard down in regards to this. Um, really quickly, since road repairs were mentioned. What's going on with the, uh, road repairs that are, uh, happening in town, especially my road, uh, South Sixth Avenue between Magnolia Street and Benner Street?
Okay, I will ask the, either the borough administrator or Council President Phil George to answer that question.
I believe, let me just make sure I'm not getting confused. Give me one second. Uh, it's up on our website. If, if it was slated for this year's, um, resurfacing. It's with our engineering department, which is, uh, CME. And my understanding is we're waiting to hear back from the Department of Transportation. They have to certify all of our plans because we're using local aid funding, uh, to fund part of that. So we, we will be resurfacing in 2021. The one thing I do see an asterisk next to South Sixth. PSE and G has indicated they're going to be working in your area. So we certainly are going to wait for them to finish. Ruining the road before we resurface the road. So that may become a timing question with PSE and G. But you are on deck for resurfacing this year. Um, and we do try our best. We give PSE and G our road list well in advance, years in advance. And despite that, we always need to have these convergences of our projects, but at least we know about.
Seconds.
So that's where we are. So that's, that is happening this year. The timings, what I can't give you a specific time at this point because we haven't done the bid yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else?
Yes, we have one more hand. Let me just, uh. Um, looks like Jason, I don't have a last name. So Jason, could you just state your name and your address, please?
Yeah. Jason Levin, oh, two, oh, seven, CPOA. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, I'm from New Brunswick today and we just wanted to write a little story about. The Mental Health Commission and the Municipal Alliance Committee that are being established. Um, I'm myself, I'm a recovering addict and I think it's amazing that everyone's doing that. Uh, and so I just am wondering what prompted the decision and if there's anyone that I could reach out to. I might be able to talk for a moment, uh, you know, sometime on the phone this week. That'd be great.
So Jason, I can, I can give you a little background on the Mental Health Commission. Um, actually, there was a resident in town who urged me to form the commission. Uh, a few months back. Um, the commission is personed by people who, um, have had, either have had experience. With mental health in their families, um, who are mental health professionals. Um, or, um, there are also, there is also representative from our schools. Councilwoman Tara Canavera is the council liaison to that board, um, and board. And she, um, has just recently, uh, started working with them. Um, if you are interested in some more information, uh, you can contact my office and we'll be happy to, to help you with that. Um, Tara, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, just the residents saw a need and we all see the need and so. Um, that was the main reason for the board being established, yes.
Councilman Hale, I see your hand up.
Just also wanted to recognize that, um, that, that Councilwoman Welkowitz, um, was a big proponent of this commission and she argued. Um, that we ought to. Rightfully take mental health seriously and that she advocated, um, quite vigorously for, uh, for increased, um, attention to mental health issues. So. Just a, a memory of Suzie.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And, uh, yeah, I'll be looking forward to seeing what gets done this year. Thank you.
You're welcome, Jason. Anybody else, Terry?
Um. Nope, I do not see any other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, then I'm going to move on in the agenda to the ordinances that require a second reading. Um, Clerk, could you please report on advertising the bond ordinance amending bond ordinance 1968? To provide for the appropriation of a New Jersey Department of Transportation Fiscal Year 2019 Municipal ID Grant. For, for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
On the ordinance amending bond ordinance 1968 for providing for the appropriation of a new NJ DOT grant in the amount of $596,550. And a reduction in the amount of prior NJ DOT grants has been duly advertised for consideration of passage. On final reading by title, an affidavit's publication or file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Any hands raised, Terry?
Um, no, I do not see any.
Okay, then my, I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho-Hun?
Yes.
All right. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the capital ordinance for Phase Two Intersection Safety Improvements in the Borough of Highland Park? As funded by a New Jersey Department of Transportation State Route Safe Roots to School Grant. For consideration of passage on final reading by title.
Capital ordinance providing for Phase Two Intersection Safety Improvements in the Borough of Highland Park. Appropriating $250,000 to pay the cost has been duly advertised. For consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's publication or on file. an affidavit's publication or on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion. Second.
Any public hearing? Any hands, Terry?
I don't see any, Mayor.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the ordinances requiring a first reading. So could you please report on introduction of accessible parking ordinance amendment?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residences occupied by persons with disabilities and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt items 14A through 14K?
Motion for that. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, on all but abstaining from 14C. As a resident who uses the food pantry, I'm going to abstain.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, I am appointing the following to the Arts Commission, Kerneal Hemmer, Belle Gable. To the Commission for Universal Access, Marlene Tarsish. To the Historical Commission, Drew Drea-Hahn. To the Recreation Advisory Commission Committee, Mark Rubin, who is a student member. To the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, Pam Holzefel and Melanie McDermott. To the Mental Health Commission, Ruth Byer, Norma Boe, Ken Kressel, Ilana Home, Officer Brian O'Mara, Andrea Costas, Elizabeth Asamoah, Nicole Huff, Tara Canavera, Kate Jaggers. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Good volunteers there, yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're about to move into the second public participation. Each speaker has three minutes but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a 30-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by 9:00 PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the Raise Hand button in this application. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading your cellphone number or your name. That cellphone number will just be the last four digits. Please begin by telling us your first and last name and your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on or off the agenda, please press star nine or the Raise Hand button now.
All right, Mayor, I see two hands. And I should mention, I neglected to do so before. We have 10 attendees at the moment.
Okay.
First is Ellen Witt. You should be able to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ellen Witt. I live on South First Avenue in Highland Park. I know that in June of last year, Highland Park passed an ordinance to establish a government energy aggregation program, which would allow Highland Park to bulk purchase electricity on behalf of our residents. The local utility would continue to provide billing and maintaining power lines through the existing service network. But the program increases price stability while allowing us to increase our use of renewable cleaner energy at discounted rates. So I understand that any resident can choose to opt out of the program if they wish to continue receiving electricity from their current provider or a different third-party provider. After the ordinance passed, I understand that Highland Park took some initial steps to try to set this up. However, I do not know the current status. And I think that this could be a very good program, allowing residents to easily use a higher percentage of renewable energy for their electricity, as well as setting an example to address the climate crisis. So I would like to know where things stand now and what plans you have to move forward on this ordinance. Also, to help us get on the way, I'd like to see some benchmark goals added to the ordinance to move us toward 100% renewable energy over time. And I'm not sure why that wasn't included in the original ordinance. And finally, I am aware that our neighbors, including Edison, East Brunswick, and South Brunswick, have recently passed similar ordinances. So I'm wondering if we have taken any steps to discuss possibly partnering with them to get better prices. Thank you.
So Ellen, thank you for that question. The energy aggregation program is very exciting to me and I'm sure the rest of the council. I'm going to ask our Borough Administrator, who's been working tirelessly on this, to fill you in.
Sure, so we've taken quite a few steps towards implementing the ordinance since it was passed. I hadn't realized it has been met since June, so that was an interesting fact. The, we have, we hired a consultant. We went out to the market to solicit proposals. And we, you know, we established.
Thirty seconds.
An energy, Mayor, may I continue past?
Yes, please.
And what we, unfortunately, we didn't get bids back that we, that essentially would come in cheaper than the PSENG price. That's my kind of crude way of saying it. So we held on to it. We had the option to, I believe we had 120 or 180 days in which to go back out. I think that lapses in a couple of weeks. I don't get an indication from our consultants that they think it's advisable at this point to do it. I do, I am aware of some of those recommendations regarding additional benchmarking languages regarding renewable energy. I can't speak to why it was not included initially, but I am aware that Sustainable Highland Park has been looking at that ordinance with that kind of feedback in mind and also looking at other aspects of the ordinance. I'd want to make sure you were aware that that was something that our committee, Sustainable Highland Park, has been an active proponent of, you know, to date. The last thing, oh, sorry, Bill?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. So that's just, that is, that is under discussion. I am not aware of the specific recommendations that they're going to come out with, but I do know they're looking at the ordinance language. And then the last point I'd make was that I have spoken with the administrator in Edison, who is, hasn't started much implementation to this point beyond the ordinance. And we're exploring if there's a fit in terms of a partnership. I can't say more than that because we just had one conversation, five, 10 minutes long. But we're both interested and open if it, if we share the similar priorities and can work through some of the details on how that would work. We're going to see, I will add that I did discuss this with our consultant. You know, what would it, would it benefit if we are a larger pool? He thought modestly, possibly, but it's, but that would be something we could explore. So I just think, I guess it's all good news, in my opinion, in terms of, you know, where we are and where we're headed with the program. And so I'm glad to hear we have some residents who are very interested in it.
Bill, did you want to add to that?
Yes, just to add in, Susie, Terry has been working with the neighborhood, neighboring towns. But I did meet with the Subcommittee last week of Sustainable Highland Park with regard to some changes for the, to the ordinance. The biggest problem that we had is that our ordinance, like many others that other towns have is that the bids that we receive have to be more competitive than our present provider. And that was done originally because of the interest in seniors as well as other people that we do, we don't face a significant increase in our rate as we try to make it more sustainable at the same time. The recommendation is to amend our ordinance. And I'm waiting for the draft to come through. That would actually say that the, the rate that we receive is better than or equal to, to give us some advantage or at least move it up a little bit. There was discussion of benchmarks through, I don't know whether it was 2025 or 2030, to move in increasing percentages to 100% renewable. There was, there wasn't complete agreement on the timing of the benchmarks, but the group was going to get the draft of the ordinance. I do have the language regarding the amendment to make it better than or equal to the rate. Do have that, that'll be passed along for council consideration and we'll work on the, on the benchmarking.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ellen.
Um, next up, I have John Valeri again. John, just state your name and address again.
Uh, yes, John Valeri, 106 South Sixth Avenue. Speaking of, when you're talking about basketball courts at the teen center, that's great. What is the, what's going on with getting the basketball court reinstalled at Mullamook Raff Park, formerly known as Carcy Park? Because I've mentioned that several times. And it was a terrible shame that the basketball court got removed many years ago. And the reason for that removal, the people that were the reason for that removal because of the constant complaints of people of color playing there, even though, even though that should not have been an issue, were what got the court removed to begin with. And I'd like to know if there's a possibility we can get that court reinstalled back.
So I'm going to ask Councilman Hirsch to take that up with the Rec Department and see what we can do.
Yeah, because the fact of the matter that you have one family, you know, that had, you know, problems with people of color playing basketball there, and then they constantly filed complaints, and then they get rid of the court because of that. And then next thing you know, we don't have a basketball court in Highland Park, but now that family's gone, you know, that court should have been there regardless. I mean, if you buy a house next to a basketball court, expect people to play basketball of all backgrounds and of all races.
It's a good point, John. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John.
Next, I see Kevin Dougherty. Please state your name and address.
Myself, I'm Kevin Dougherty. I live at 405 Grant Avenue. I'm a member as well of Sustainable Highland Park. I wanted to follow up on the remarks that Ellen Witt made that we are very interested in the borough making an effort to change the ordinance that has governing community power aggregation and trying to really be able to go out and solicit bids that'll not only maybe work, but certainly could get us more information on how close we're getting to getting bids that would work. So the idea of having benchmarks, getting us up to 100%, working with Edison, these seem like really good ideas. And I think it would be a great shame if, you know, Highland Park, which has been such a leader in many environmental issues, were not to be moving on this, even as other towns in our area are. And if there's a possibility of making this work with Edison, if it happens that we're very close to being able to make it work and working with them would get us to the threshold we need to meet, then by all means, let's try to do it. So I really want to commend the efforts that are being made and, and hope you really pursue these very energetically. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else?
I believe I have one more hand there, Paul Sowers. Um, Paul, I'm going to have to promote you to panelist, which I'm giving you the heads up means your video may shut on for a moment. So I'm going to give you that little opportunity to ready yourself. I will shut off your video, but I've, I've learned that from past experience. In order to promote you, I have to promote you to panelist so we can hear you. And I'm going to hold on, stop your video. And okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Sowers. I live at 242 South Sixth Avenue. I'm also on Sustainable Highland Park. I would just like to echo the same, the remarks that Ellen and Kevin made, that, that we do need to, to move toward this goal of 100% renewables. And it's come more, more and more evident over the last 10 and 20 years with storms like Superstorm Sandy and now a pandemic, which is certainly related to what we're doing to the environment. And, and I, I think that Highland Park should, is up to this and we're more than willing to help with the process. And that's really all I need, had to say.
Great, that's really good to hear, Paul. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Borough Administrator, are we?
I believe that concludes our, that was our last hand raised.
Okay. So council members, do you want to take a five-minute recess before we go into work session, or do you want to continue through?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a need one and I need. It's a, it's a personal request. I know, I'm not a councilperson.
Okay, so let's, let's all take that five-minute recess.
I gotta show that, I gotta, while, while we're on hiatus here, I gotta show the, and I know that the public is here too. We got a really good video from the Arts Commission advocating for their bench project. Stephanie, you may, you probably remember the genesis of, of, of this. Show that as an intermission. I gotta find that.
Hey, Lori.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hi Lori.
Hello, Terry. How are you?
That was my other. In addition to my own biological needs, I also wanted to give Lori time to log in.
So we've got eighteen people still still with us?
No, well, that's twelve of us is us, so it's six members of the public.
So my husband's on a Zoom meeting next door. And some people, they are yelling at each other.
Hopefully not work.
Lori, thank you for saying you needed a break. I needed the same break you did.
I didn't want to let anybody entertain otherwise.
Hi Lori, how are you?
I'm okay. How are you?
Good.
Good. Sounds like it's raining now.
Is it?
Yeah, it's raining here.
Where is here?
Somerset.
Oh, right next door.
Yeah.
When I left my office at four thirty, it was snowing in Piscataway. And by the time I got to Edison, it was just rain. And when I got to Highland Park, it was nothing.
The sun always shines over Highland Park.
Yes.
I love that background, Matt.
I don't know. We're on a break. Dale, there's somebody here who's shy who's shy to see you.
Where is she? Alana, are you still there?
Oh, it was like a pop. I saw her face for a flicker.
My virtual background here.
You know, Alana. Is she there?
Yeah.
It's it's Women's History Month. So you have to start getting ready to. Prepare yourself to run for office so that one day you'll be sitting in the mayor's chair. Okay, your dad can help you with that.
Gladly. Better behind the scenes.
How's it going, Alana? Yeah. That's good to hear.
Our babies are getting so big.
Jackson, who was born on the dais, is now six feet three.
That's scary.
Yes, it is.
So I saw, I was watching, there was a HPTV archive. Of you when you. Holding a bail.
Oh my gosh.
We would have days when Carolyn had a meeting and I had to prosecute and I'd be standing there cross examining. With Jackson wrapped around my shoulder.
Okay, are we all back? Do I have all our council people here?
We're all here.
Okay, great. So let's get back in there, Terry.
Okay.
All right, we're we're all back for our work session. The first thing on the agenda is a resolution in support of Medicare for All. At the Act of twenty nineteen, Tara, it's on your agenda.
I'm sure you all know what Medicaid for All is. The HR thirteen eighty four S eleven twenty nine. Is a bill that establishes the national health insurance for everyone. And unfortunately. No action has been taken in quite a while. The last action for HR thirteen eighty four was. Twelve ten, two thousand and nineteen, where it was. A subcommittee hearing was held. And S eleven twenty nine, no action has been taken since four ten, twenty nineteen. Where it was read twice and referred to the Committee of Finance. And also mentioned in this resolution is HR sixty nine oh six and S thirty seven ninety. And again, there's. The most recent action was HR sixty nine oh six. Was in seven thirteen, twenty twenty, where it was referred to the Subcommittee on Health. And S thirty seven ninety, no action has been taken since May twentieth of twenty twenty, where it was read twice. And referred to the Committee of Health, Education, Labor and. The Board of Health feels that it's very important that we support this. Resolution because we do have a lot of residents in Highland Park who are impacted. By not having insurance and also due to the pandemic, a lot of the people who did have insurance. Prior do no long no longer have insurance, so they're hoping that we will. Move forward with support for the resolution to try and get some more movement on it.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Tara on the resolution, I believe it was circulated to the council?
So I, I mean. I think it is almost impossible for anyone to argue that we should have universal healthcare. And that we should have even a single payer system. But I I do think that if we're gonna wade into a federal. Issue, one that is not. One that has less of a nexus to to Highland Park, that that there. There are some important things to 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 recognize and that the Medicare for All bill. As drafted, has a price tag of thirty two trillion dollars over the first ten years. And there's a number of other options or bills that get us to universal coverage and universal healthcare with a lower price tag. And so I I I. The very first political campaign I ever worked on was for a man named Bob Carey, who was arguing for a single payer healthcare program. And I I certainly do argue for that. But I do think it's important to recognize that that Medicare for All may not be the way to get there. And and so I I I don't know what the process is that we want to go through. I don't know if we want to have a discussion about this. I I I do. Sometimes. Want to make sure that we are. Addressing things that are coming from our constituents. I know that we need more healthcare. I know that we need a single payer healthcare. I'm just not convinced that this is the way to get there and so. I you know, I I just think it's important to raise that that there are other ways of getting. A single payer system, other ways of getting towards universal coverage. Which I think are the goals that that I think we all support, that may or may not be this bill and may or may not be. As drafted or as created. And and I would suggest that a broader amendment. About those overall goals might be something. That I I could be willing to support. I'm just not sure that I can go with a Medicare for All at this point right now.
So let me ask Tara a question. Tara, did the, if this came from the Board of Health.
Yes.
Did they discuss any of the other options to achieve the goal?
Um, they have not in my presence. I could bring it back to them and ask them. For further discussion.
Can I suggest, Matt, that you get with Tara on some of the other bills that you were just mentioning? That might get us.
There's there's a fantastic report by the Urban Institute that I that outlines. Eight different potential options for improving healthcare in America. Single payer. Medicare for All, doing nothing. And I think it's a really important report to to take a look at. I'd be happy to share that with you or the or the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add to this discussion? Matt?
Hey, um, thank you. I just wanted to add, I mean, I I think as a as a, you know, like other resolutions that we. That we vote on, you know, when it comes, when you know, when it comes to taking up, when it comes to supporting bills, I mean, this is an advocacy piece. To show support for not only a specific piece of legislation, but also. A concept as well. And I mean, I think that. You know, we have, there there are a hundred and eighteen, I think, co-sponsors on this on this bill, and we have two New Jersey representatives who. Who who are co-sponsors, Representative Payne and Watson Coleman. And I mean, I so I, I'm a little ambivalent, I guess. I mean, I I I hear what Councilman Hale is saying. When it comes to the best route for universal coverage. But I think we're being asked to support a piece of legislation that has been. You know, that that was introduced in the last session. Is that, uh, you know, so we're not being asked other things. We're being asked to support this this bill. So I think that's that's just, I think we need to keep that in mind.
Okay, anybody else? Elsie?
Yes, um, I think this this is an important, I've been through many to the single pair. Uh when President Obama was first elected and there was a big push to make sure that. That single pair was in place and it got watered down into many, many different forms of. And many different forms and type of attempt to create. A universal healthcare system, so. People who don't have jobs or the working poor that works two and three jobs and still cannot get healthcare. That that this this is an attempt to make sure that if people are healthy and they're working two or three different jobs. And they still can't get healthcare, that they can maintain their mental health, their their physical health, they can take care of their families. So this is an attempt to make sure that it's a catchall for all, so people who desperately need healthcare. Unlike most of us that have healthcare, that there will be an opportunity for those people, for their health to be taken care of. I remember watching documentaries where people said. For example, under the Obamacare, they haven't gone to doctors in thirty five years or have never gone to a doctor since they were born and they had an opportunity to go. To see a doctor and it's cheaper for people to go and get healthcare. Rather than going to the emergency room when it's too late and it's gonna be most costly. So I would definitely support what was proposed by our senators.
Okay, Phil and then Stephanie and then Tara and then Matt.
The Medicare for All bill. Became somewhat politicized when it became a flag. For a certain point of view opposing government. Interference, kind of like Social Security and the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. And I think by coming out in support of it, especially if more and more and more municipalities do. It shows that from the grassroots, there's an impetus to do something about this and get it done. Instead of attacking every little bit and piece of every attempt. To ensure that everybody has reasonably decent healthcare that they can afford. It is the the most serious crisis next to hunger in our country. And I think whether or not it's perfect or not, and I do not by any any stretch of the imagination think it's perfect. I think that it. It is a step in the right direction, but it's not the right bill. But if we don't support it, nothing's going to get done. We're gonna have the same problem with the John Lewis Voter Rights Act. If we don't support it. And say you better get something done and tell our representatives that we're going to vote with our feet. If you don't get to this somehow. So I would tend to favor it, even though I don't think that it's the best bill in the world. But as a statement from from Highland Park. Who has a real interest and always has for at least the twenty years that that I've been. Following and working for the borough and then, you know, it's an elected council person. That this is the approach that we should take. And when something better comes along, we can always correct it, but right now, a step is needed.
Stephanie, did you want to say something?
Um, yes, so when I had Board of Health last year as well. They started this conversation again, I understand it was war, it was conversations before in the past. About this bill, about us supporting it. Actually, it was a few years, it predates like many of us here. That's on council from what Laura had said and. Our congressman at the time was not on board and the reason they bought it back up because of. The pandemic and everything that we have going on right now is such an important time. To have this discussion again, knowing still we, there's people that. Are going if you are underinsured, you have to be supplemented. So it was it was a lot of conversation. That we had about this medical Medicare for All. Bill and I think. I think. That we should consider it and also. Like Phil said, when other options come around, we can also discuss that as well. It's, I mean. Finally up to us, but I think I think I do agree with Phil.
Okay, Matt, Matt Hale and then Matt Hirsch and then Tara, I'm gonna save you for last since it's your, it's your agenda item.
You know, I mean, we we can go back and forth and debate the the policy. I just would. You know, and and I don't think anyone is against the idea of providing health insurance to those who most need it. One of the things that Medicare for All does is gives health insurance to people who don't need it. And pays for it for people who don't need it. And I think that 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 part of the issue is that with the Medicare all for all package, there are people who. Who have a health insurance plan, who will be taken off of that health insurance plan, including. Stats I looked up, seventy percent of today's retirees use supplemental. Insurance for Medicare, which they wouldn't be able to do under Medicare for All. And. That that's for for parts A and B, for part D, it's about thirty four percent. Use a supplemental private insurance company that under the Medicare for All bill, they would not be able to do. And I would make an argument that if we are interested, and I certainly would count myself as interested in making sure that we are providing. Adequate healthcare for the everyone who needs adequate healthcare and and especially those who don't have it. That a a a plan of expanding the ACA, a combination of a public option along with. a, a existing private options ultimately gets the healthcare and gets the health insurance to the people who need it. Um, and the people who, who don't have it right now. And that's a doable plan. A, a combination off like that and the Urban Institute report that I've looked at and several other reports, that's half as expensive. 17.5 trillion dollars over 10 years versus 32 trillion dollars over 10 years. And getting the vast, getting universal coverage for a half the price. So I don't think anybody is arguing that we need a better healthcare system. I just think that we should be recognizing that this, that there are many ways to get there and many options that we can follow and many arguments that we can have about that. I'd be happy to support something about universal healthcare. I'd be happy to support something about the need for more insurance. I'd be happy to support something about, especially in times of COVID, that we need something like this. I think that there are numerous very smart plans that are out there that we ought to, if we're gonna wade into this discussion, that we push those from the outset. That's all I'm saying. So.
Matt Hirsch, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, my internet's a little balky. I'm sorry if this is all broken up. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, Matt, I think, I think Matt's right that, you know, it's councilperson Hale, I'm sorry, is right that, you know, from a policy standpoint, I think there's a lot of ways to, to get there, but I mean, we're and and perhaps there can be language in a resolution that's that, that says, while there are many ways to get there, from an advocacy standpoint, this is the bill that's in front of us. And I, I think that's what I find appealing about, about this resolution is that, you know, it does put, it does signal to our district representative, who is not a co-sponsor, uh, for example, um, including, you know, and, and our neighboring representative to, you know, right over the county border, uh, is not either. So it would be good. I think, I think, you know, I, I prefer to think our role here is to just put that kind of upward pressure on our, on our elected representatives to signal that, you know, this is the bill that's in front of us. This is what we support. Are there better ways, are there different better ways to get there? Maybe. But they need to know that we are on board with, with, with this concept. And here's a bill that they can, you know, choose to run with or not.
Okay, Tara, did you want to add to that conversation?
Um, I did want to add, um, a personal note that, you know, I work very hard. I've worked through the pandemic, meeting with clients, putting myself and my family at risk throughout the whole pandemic. And I don't have insurance because I can't afford the insurance that my job offers. And there's a lot of residents here in Highland Park that are in the same position as I am. I make a little too much to qualify for state insurance, but I can't afford to buy insurance through my job. And we have a lot of residents here in Highland Park that are out there working every day, putting themselves at risk during the pandemic who do not have insurance. And something has to be done. And you're right. Is this the ideal bill? No, it's not, but it is sending a message that something has to be done. And I just wanted to share, you know, not just my story, but other people in Highland Park that I know are in the same situation as I am.
All right. So, so hearing everybody's comments, this is what I'm thinking. Number one, this did come from the Board of Health to begin with, and I think it's important for them to also understand some of the things that Matt is, Matt is reading of other bills that are out there. That being said, I, I think we have the opportunity to support this and add in, as I think Matt Hirsch was leading to, add in some discussion as we've done in other supportive resolutions, urging that, that urging the, the legislators to consider this as well as some of the other bills that would make it equitable, not only for people who can't afford the, um, the insurance now, but if it's true that people who are on Medicare now would not be able to have additional coverage from, to cover the things that Medicare doesn't exactly cover right now. I think we need to look at that as well. So what I'm saying is, my sense from most of you is that you want to support this. So my suggestion is that we take a look at a resolution and Ed, I'm looking right at you, that we take a look at a resolution that does say similar to what we've done in other recent resolutions, that we generally support this, but urge that the legislators also look at some of the other bills that are out there. Okay?
I, I would just point out, Ed, that I can count, so you don't really have to work that hard. The rest of the, the council seems very committed to this. And so I'm, I'm okay making a, a, I mean, I, I, I disagree with it. And so I, I just, I, I recognize that the, the majority of the council and I, I respect their opinions, I respect their thoughts and, and all of that. So I just wanted to, you know, point that out.
Okay. All right. So Ed, you, you've got this?
Maybe the resolution.
Thank you.
What was that, Matt?
Okay, let's move on. We have a, a large discussion coming up. Um, and that is the, oh, I, I, just before we get into the budget, I just want you all to know that as I do once every few years, when the Reformed Church is about to open up another property to give a Highland Park, Highland Park homeless residents a place to live in Highland Park. Uh, I am preparing a letter of support for that project as I've done in the past. So I just wanted you guys to know about that. Moving on to the budget, Terry, you want to take this? I just, before you start, I just want to remind everyone that we are looking at a budget that we have to pass by a certain amount of time. And so anything that might come from the stimulus package we've, we spoke about before, will have to be addressed after a budget is approved. Terry? You're up.
Thanks. I, I muted myself there. I don't do that, but it was pouring, just for those of you wanting the weather update. Uh, it did pour here for a moment there.
Yeah, it was rattling on the roof.
Yeah, I couldn't, I was worried it would muffle your conversation, so I muted it.
Not pouring on the avenue here behind me.
No, it's a beautiful evening. Go outside.
And the lights are shining.
So, so just, just you mentioned the timeline. I'll just reiterate it here. The, the state every year comes out with guidance on when the budget has to be introduced and when it has to be adopted. So we are, we will be compliant if we introduce in the first meeting in April, which I believe is the sixth. Correct me if I'm wrong. Let me see. Yes, it says here on the agenda. And, um, and then the hope would be to adopt at the May, the first meeting in May. Um, and that also would be, uh, in comportment with the schedule the state puts out. So just to put some parameters, a one thing I would mention, I didn't do the pie charts and all that stuff. I intend to do that as part of the introduction, but the truth is I didn't want to do it and then have to make a bunch of changes coming out of this meeting. I just didn't know which way it was gonna go. So, but my intention would be, assuming the mayor agrees, would be to put, um, the, uh, to put that together as I have, and I, I've already gotten some input from Matt Hale about ideas for that. And I welcome any others when we come out of this meeting. Uh, that would also accompany the introduction and that would be also made available on the website for the residents as a way of kind of have a shorthand to get to the budget. So just be aware, I fully intend to do that again this year. But similar to prior years, that would come, you know, as a secondary step. So with that, struggling a little with how to best move forward, not doing this in person with all of our papers in front of us. But I'm assuming everybody has access to and has had a chance to review the worksheets that were sent out. That gave, and typically when, and I'll just refer in the page numbers on the PDF that I shared with you all. Uh, let me pull mine up. Uh, you know, just so you know where I'm at, you know, when I'm speaking, but you know, going to the first page. Um, and I can share my screen, Mayor, if you want. I could not. I wasn't sure exactly.
I think everybody's, hopefully they did read through it and the numbers really are on the first page, Terry.
Right. So, so essentially the first page seems to be in my, my limited experience working with the governing body where the rubber meets the road and that it kind of lays out where kind of the overall tax bill would likely be, given the proposed budget that I have put together with input from all the departments and some of you, as well as some assumptions about the school, the county, you'll see in that first page, we've assumed 2%. I don't have numbers from the county. So that was just kind of me trying to be conservative and Lori, uh, you know, just to try to, we don't know for sure, uh, what that number is. In the past, I've, we've been able to pry out kind of a preview and I just haven't had the ability to get that number yet. I did get some revised number from the school. I believe this is in the ballpark. If not, if anything, it may go down a little bit. So just so you know, some of those numbers will, will be changed, but I needed to have some assumptions in there in order to have this conversation. So we assumed 2% would be kind of reasonable based on prior years. So just be advised, some of this shifts when we make other decisions. So essentially what this all boils down to, um, would be an overall with the assumptions I've laid out in terms of the county and, and the schools, uh, approximately $183.29 cent increase in the overall tax bill for the average assessment. Okay? Now, um, that portion of that, that would be the municipality is $63.57. So just to put that into perspective, and that's how you should read that. Um, so that's kind of in a nutshell. I'm not, this was kind of my, the first go around with what we thought were the essential things. Although that said, there may be some opportunities to shift some things around and that's where I'm hoping we can have that conversation.
A chance to compare the percent increases from over the last few years?
I started to, and the truth is, Mayor, what happens is because when I do these worksheets and when we're finally adopted, sometimes things shift around. But I did look at it last year. Was flat. It was basically, we were able and we had some things working in our favor last year that, that allowed basically the overall bill to be flat, if not a little bit lower for the average assessment. So just as a means of comparison.
Prior years?
And prior years, hold on, I have my little cheat sheet when we go back.
Recent prior years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I, I did look back a little ways. I, I mainly looked at the municipal
Correct.
Piece of that.
Control.
Yeah. So, uh, last year, we, there was about a one in the municipal share for 2020, uh, went up by 1.04% as opposed to 1.98 that you see here. Just to try to make equivalent. In 19, our municipal share went up 3.11% total dollar value, 96.16. And then in 18, uh, I believe it was 1.87% and 73.97. So we're in
The same ballpark.
We're in, we're not way out one way or way out the other in terms of, of what's happened historically on the municipal portion. I was not able to get that, the overall bill number for you because I, I didn't have confidence in my, my numbers to be able to do.
And the school numbers are being held pretty much the same as last year?
Um, I, I did get the numbers from Linda. I don't know, Lori, did you take, I know I forwarded you that note from the schools, um, but I don't know if you had a chance to just my, my note, I did a quick subtraction based on what I put in and versus there, and their number was a little lower. Again, that's not their final budget number, but that's kind of her, what she thinks are pretty, pretty strong numbers. So this number, if anything, that number will come down a little bit, but not by all.
The county the same?
I kept the county at 2% because I didn't know which way it was gonna.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so again, I can do a little more beating of the bush, but I was
Terry on this? Or, or for Lori? Matt?
So my recollection is that the county was flat last year.
They were. We just were being conservative with the two. I don't have a number for the county.
Okay. I mean, I, you answered, I, I added two pages of questions and you, you pretty much answered them.
I, I, Matt gets brownie points for being the only person who got me some fairly detailed questions in advance. So it actually helped me get primed for tonight. So I appreciate it. So.
Are there any other questions for Terry?
I can walk through the Highlands. Oh, sorry.
It, it looks like, it looks like they're, oh, Matt Hirsch, your hand.
Just, just generally speaking, because I don't want to, I don't want to give any hypotheticals away right now, but considering that there are some larger project, you know, so, you know, all of our boards and commissions have, 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 have the regular allocation. But some have been, and then this predates me, have been talking about some larger projects that might require additional funding. Or, you know, grant, you know, grant revenue to, you know, and so forth. Terry, how, how should we, what, what is the, what is the best way to communicate those things with you? I'm sure you know, at least of one of them that I'm talking about.
Well, I think, I think it depends. I guess, I guess I need to know, I, all of the boards and commissions were communicated with in advance of this budget to say, you know, what are your, do you have any big projects, little projects? Otherwise, some of which would have to go through your committees, you know, in order to get, if, if it's going to be a significant commitment of borough funds beyond kind of their usual 2,000, 5,000 and so forth. If there's a grant that for anything big, I'm hopeful that we can identify grant opportunities, but as we talked about, Matt, there have been some, some situations where we have to match and that match can be $15,000 or something.
Right.
And again, I'd wanna, you have to have kind of your process within your own standing committee. And then we would do a resolution to support that. With grants, what I'll tell you, and this did come up in the back and forth with Matt Hale was, you know, one of the challenges is we sometimes don't know all the grant commitments walking into this meeting. So you'll see some blanks next to some grants that we usually get, like last year's CDVG. Forget about the one that you just voted on tonight. We still haven't gotten the official letter from the county saying you got last year's and we were just voting on this year. So but what we do is we insert those into the budget as we go with those chapter 159. So anything that's a, a grant, most of them at this point, by the time we would get the award, is likely to come in later in the year, if not next year, and we can budget for it next year when it comes in. So I think that's it. There are other projects that might be more capital projects, and so that has a different budgeting process than this, and we can approach those differently. So, but if they didn't, if you or they didn't communicate this project of significance that requires operating dollars, it is not in here. So I need to be made aware of that. If it's a priority and we'll have to obviously get the mayor in the loop on it and, and make sure everybody's comfortable with the allocation. But we didn't, you know, there, there, the, the boards and commission budgets are essentially their routine, you know, programs and activities that they would normally do. That's kind of the level that they were held at. So I guess I don't know if I'm going on and on, but that's, that's how I'd answer that.
Thank you.
Phil, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, well, part, uh, part of it, Mayor, was just the answer with, you know, my question was, when will we get something more realistic or more accurate from the school and the county? But we can wait on that.
I'll have it. I have it. I can probably get the schools I've got. The, the county is the one that I just don't have as many ins with, so I'm gonna see what I, maybe Lori can call the CFO or something.
I'm, I'm satisfied. We can, we can wait, but we can at least see how things are breaking. Uh, you know, in the individual departments. Uh, the other was uh, with regard to the capital projects because uh, we have already said specifically that there are some needs in DPW for, for capital equipment, but we, we could discuss those on Thursday.
Yeah, the, I didn't, I, I figured, I, I, I really didn't get a lot into the weeds on capital at this point. There is a cap. Yeah, the, I didn't get, I, I figured, I, I, I really didn't get a lot into the weeds on capital at this point. There is a capital budget. That will, I will distribute, but it's, that's really kind of your outline. Um, all of that would have to be authorized by ordinances and things where we could really flesh out the projects with more detail. But I do have the outlines of that, but I was just worried we'd be stressed. I wasn't, I was expecting a lot more questions that we might've been able to do it tonight, but. Um, you know, that's something that in the past we haven't, we've kind of put kind of public works needs and we put kind of a, a number. And then we sort the, the, the details out, but I do have those requests, um, in, in, in a spreadsheet that I can share.
Okay. Any other questions on what, oh, Stephanie?
Um, so I know in the past we had, um, the department heads come in. But Terry, did you meet with any of the department heads this time? Or they just kind of like sent their requests and.
Based on the request and I do meet with them if I, mostly if I have questions, but the truth is. The marching orders were with probably the exception of public works where we knew we had some additional costs to budget for. Don't come in with crazy requests. Like this year, we wanna be conservative. We were worried about revenues. We're, you know, in coming out of the pandemic and we don't know what kind of economic climate. So part of the reason. Um, we didn't belabor that process was you'll see there, the, the change, a lot of the big changes were things that weren't in the department's. Budgets outside of a couple of areas. It was really. You know, administrative things that, you know, we either have to pay or I'm recommending that we do. So there is a dialogue with the, um, the, the department heads between myself. If, and I, I know you and the mayor have discussed something about that. Maybe for next year, we have some ideas of how we could do something. Um, especially hopefully we're having in-person meetings. I think it'd be a little more meaningful. Um, but essentially the marching orders were, don't go crazy. You know, try to keep it flat and it's mainly contractual and salary increases that you're seeing from the departments. Uh, where they have any discretion. I tried to curtail it except for in some noted areas.
Also, the, any departments that, uh, fall under any council person's purview. Um, should have been involved in the numbers that were submitted to Terry. Um, before they got to Terry. So I just wanna make that clear as well.
I think I'll take some, I think some of that happened better than others. I think because this year. I honestly, I, I really, we were, we were really trying to keep things pretty stable, uh, if not find some opportunities. Uh, we just, we didn't do the usual kind of process. And I think there's probably some ways we could improve for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the two departments that I, uh, well, the one was DPW that I know I did see that line item. But the other one, which I never really was actually public safety, but with the, with the fire department. If it was like some kind of incentive for the volunteers to.
No, so that's, I guess you're.
I, I, I see it. I hear it. I'm getting looped in on some of the emails with the fire department. Like I, I don't. And I'm, I'm sure Elsie went above and beyond for them, but I.
You spoke to me and asked me that before.
So, so, so basically, I, I don't know if Elsie got frozen over there, but, um. Uh, basically, um, uh. The, the public safety committee has been involved in long, long discussions regarding our volunteer organizations. And that's what's being addressed in the public safety portion of the, of the budget. Um, I do also wanna let everyone know. Um, that the, as Elsie said in her remarks at the beginning of the meeting, um. When I talk to mayors all over the state, uh, and especially in our area. Um, everybody is having problems with volunteerism. So, um, it's even when they gave incentives. So, so it's, it's a rampant problem that. Has to be addressed one way or another, but you know, that's more a question for you to, to go through with Elsie and, and. Um, so.
No, I just wanted to make sure like we all, cause I know all of us, like all of our committees and I know some of the other committees like pushing for the other big projects too.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
And I, Mayor, if I might, I'm sorry, Elsie.
Okay. Um, the public safety committee, as I said earlier, that we have been working on, um. Not only trying to get volunteers, but there's a lot of requests that came in about. Getting some part-time help and possibly getting some full-time help. We have been looking at all of that. We cut back in a lot of other departments this year to make sure that we have enough. Funds going into the fire department. So we can make sure that should there be a fire in town. That we are adequately staffed along with receiving mutual aid, but we can't rely on mutual aid all the time. We wanna make sure that we are staffed after handling the, the problems that may arise if there is a fire here in town. So yes, we have put funds together as the chair of funding. You should have seen that funds were put in. More funds were put into the fire department budget this year. And I'm quite sure you have gone over that when you took a look at the budget.
Yeah, I, I did, but I wasn't, when I had saw police and I saw it got like all meshed and then you mentioned it again. So it bought, it bought back to the top of.
Yeah, we're gonna. Go ahead.
It's fire, it's police, it's. All of the OEM server team and everyone else, the community, our teen center. And also we are looking for funding for our first aid squad and in different ways in which we help out. So when you look at public safety budget, it's a huge budget that comprises of all these various departments.
And, and of what I was going to say.
The, the PD.
Right. What I was going to say, um, was basically that. Um, as Elsie said, everything is lumped together in, in public safety. But to better understand the public safety department and their budgets. We're gonna have to find a different way to look at it moving forward.
All right. No, no, I, I, that was the big, that's the big chunk. So I looked, I looked at it. It was a long time looking at it, but, but that's just why I wanted to bring that up to everyone.
I mean, I guess, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Can I say that Stephanie, in the future, when you look at the budget, if, as the chair of finance, could you just reach out to me and say, hey, Elsie, what's going on with this? And then we can try to address as some of the issues and questions that you have. But not only for you, but for everybody else. If, if, you know, this is what you do on a daily basis. So maybe there are tools in your toolbox that you can help us to simplify or explain it better. Because this is what you do is finance. So maybe you might know of tools and mechanisms that where we can break it out to show a better way. Of highlighting each area. Terry?
So Mayor, if you don't mind, I did put some notes in my kind of cover email when I initially send the budgets. But I guess maybe it might make sense to just highlight some of the, the areas where unless you just, you just say everybody.
I don't know.
I just didn't, I don't know, cause I, I did cover that in my memo. So that's why I was like, maybe not everybody saw it. Um.
So, so unless there, are there any other questions on, on what Terry's presented as the overall for the. For the budget for this year? Matt, Hale?
Um, I mean, I, I, I think the idea of don't go crazy, try and keep it as low as possible, be conservative. As a budget, um, overview, I think that, that makes sense. And I think that this budget. For the most part accomplishes that. Um, but we still do have a fair number of, of holes that we just don't know the answer to. As of yet. Um, and, and, um, you know, some of those are the grant funds and, and, and things like that, but. But the biggest one is, is, is the, the federal rescue money. And, and. What I worry about is that, um, and, and what I tried to say in my report tonight is. I, I don't want the public or us to think of that as a piggy bank. That we're about to raid to solve all of our problems. And, and, and I, I, I think that it is incredibly important. That we are very, very transparent about the money that we get. How that money is allocated and what the process by which we will decide on those allocations. Um, uh, because we're already seeing people saying, you know, they're gonna get one point. Eight million dollars. I want tax cuts. I want my potholes, but you know, and, 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 and. It, it does, I understand that it doesn't work like that. I understand that it is a lot more complicated. And I think we need to prepare people for the idea that, you know, this is, um, we, we just need to make sure that we communicate. When the money comes in, how the money comes in, what we have the capacity to spend it on, what our priorities are. For assistance, um, like that. And then how that process. Um, of, of deciding where that, well, I don't know what that process is, but we should, I, I would hope that we would.
So basically, I can, I can tell you what the process would normally be. Um, because it's budget related, it would go to the admin committee. I have a habit whenever we're discussing budgets to invite the chair of the finance committee also to that, those meetings. So Stephanie would be invited to join us at those meetings. That committee would do the initial look at everything and then we would probably have a work session. With the council on the spending of that money. So that's basically how it would go.
Great process. I think we should explain what that process is when we get closer to it.
Yeah. The other thing I was going to ask everyone. This evening, oh, before I do, are there any other questions on this budget? Terry?
I just wanna make the point, and I, I think everybody knows it, but I just wanna make the point. This proposal that you see here doesn't have any of that federal money anticipated, accounted, you know. Just to, to Matt's point, because we need to make sure we can fund our operations with this unknown out there. And we need to, we need to be responsible. So I just wanted to make, if it wasn't clear, I think everybody knew that. But maybe for the three people who are left with us on the line, you know, the proposal here, and we don't know how much we'll know between now and introduction. But from what, what early signs we can see, I don't know how much operating. Offset money there would be in this money anyway, uh, to count on. So I think this is the most responsible approach is to treat that as a separate project as you outlined, Mayor. And, um, and a, a separate process for how we would go about spending it. Um, because we don't even know how the state's gonna allow us to utilize those. And Lori's contemplated this quite a bit. And is it gonna be an aid, state aid? Is it gonna be a grant? Is it gonna be, you know, we don't even know the form.
It's gonna be up to the state.
Yeah, exactly. So it's really, really hard to credibly, uh, to budget properly. And to try to play with that money at the same time.
Yeah, it's, uh, pretending it's not there is the best sensible solution for right now.
Absolutely.
Uh, but I think that as long, uh, when it comes in and if it comes in and how it comes in. We need to explain that to people because you can already see people lining up saying, you know, I want this, I want this, I want this. And that's just not.
So that's a really good segue to what I was going to say, Matt. Um, and that is, uh, aside from this. Stimulus package, um, I've been, uh, asked by Congressman Palone's office. Um, to put together, um, a list of. Almost shovel-ready projects that we have. On our agendas, um, for funding, exclusive of this. Um, and Terry, he said in the one to two million dollar range.
That's what you told me. I, I don't have the email in front of me.
Yeah, I think, he, he said in the one to two million dollar range. So what I wanted to do tonight. Was ask each of the council members that are here to get to me. Unfortunately, he told this to me today and he needs us to respond to him tomorrow. Um, so, but each of you have projects that your committees have been talking about. Or your boards or your, or your departments. Um, I would like to hear from each of you. Early tomorrow, um, if there is such a, and he said it's gotta be shovel-ready, not pie in the sky. Um, but something that's basically ready to go, um, project that you've all been looking at. And could use between a million and two million dollars for. Can you do that? Can you get me a list tomorrow?
A project or multiple projects now?
I want one from each person.
For a million bucks each? Wow.
Not that they're all gonna get it. We have to submit it to him.
I was hoping it'd be more cumulative, but anyway.
Uh, or, or yes, it could maybe be cumulative, but, um, he did, um. Want a list of those things. So if you could get that to me as early as possible tomorrow. Um, I need to get back to him, yeah, by, by five o'clock Wednesday. Elsie?
When you say shovel-ready, that, does it have to be construction or?
No.
Right.
Shovel-ready meaning, you know, it's not a debate, it's not, you know, it's ready to go. Okay.
Okay.
Having said that, uh. Sorry?
I just. Terry, what, what's the, what, what's the timeframe looking like on, what, what, what is our budget cycle this year? What, what are we?
We're introducing on April sixth.
Okay. Pass by, by.
By May, whatever the first meeting is in May. That's the, what the state lays out. What I can do. Short order, I do have this, I didn't wanna confuse this entire conversation by introducing new numbers midstream. But I do have the schools better numbers. I do have, uh, we'll, 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 we'll beat on the door of the county, just say. One to two percent, three percent, you know, give us some sense of where you're headed with your numbers. Usually by now, they have a fairly good indication. I'm wondering if they're kind of going like this over this federal money too. You know, I don't know exactly their process. So I'll find out what I can, I think this week, um, to get you an updated cover sheet, you know, this page one overview. Um, and then we can, you know, you guys can, can take it from there, but essentially, you know. If, if you can, I don't know if it's possible. I know you like to take the totality into consideration in your thinking about the municipal budget. But having some feedback on. This sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents for the average assess and the one point nine eight percent would be helpful. Because, you know, I don't have infinite time before introduction. I gotta prepare, you know, materials for the public, et cetera. So, you know, if, if there's a, a real red flag anywhere in here or more explanation on some of what we're proposing. I, it would be helpful to know that tonight. That's what the hope was, that you'd have those things identified for us to talk about.
Okay. Any other budget questions?
So I have one last question. Terry, when we, you said at the first May meeting. So that following, I don't know.
No, May would be adoption.
Uh huh.
So April first, April sixth intro and May whatever is, and Joan, maybe you can pipe in with the actual date. I don't know. Uh, would be, uh, adoption, the way the state regulations read, you must adopt by, on or by some meeting day in April. Or your next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting. So May would be our next regularly scheduled meeting.
But after, and after that, so that following, I know our, the, for the tax bill. It will reflect in what second quarter?
Third quarter.
Will it be?
Third quarter, August.
Lori can explain the, the time. So we basically first and second quarters are estimates. And then we reconcile that with the, um, when, when we have the actual budget certified. Okay. I get that right, Lori?
That's what I did. Okay.
So that, that those, those tax bills with, you know how it always goes three, four, one, two, because it's third and fourth, it's your actual, we're now. If, you know, based that we estimated and then for the first and the second quarter, we rectify that in the third and fourth and one and two of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right then, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Terry, thank you very much for how well you explained that. You answered options without me having to ask.
Shovel-ready project. Shovel-ready project.
Have some big dreams tonight, everybody.
Night.